I know that Rick was up here one day, maybe two weeks ago. But I didn't know that it was about that.
No, I know that Don Kent was in him yesterday and the day before. Something seemed like that. Yeah.
Rhonda.
Yeah.
That's who Rick was looking for. These people that she's talking about when he was up.
Okay, so she just needs a reminder. We just thought I'd know that the issues still were on. I'll take care of that. Ready?
Okay, I have a note here, I'm guessing from you, from Streets. Where did this, the list come from?
Actually Rodney gave that and shared and deciphered it so you can read it. All those are there.
Okay. I did, I did meet with the guys and talk to them a little about what was going on. But they are doing some potable repairing and using our little roller to repair the streets. And as usual, we're getting Rodney doing weed whacking. And I think they're doing a really good job on the weeds out there. Gary's really good with that. He's very good with it. New mulch has been put down for playground, apparently. I didn't see all that being done, but they've done that. I was in the garage this morning. I was complimenting them on the garage. They said that during the rainy day, they were cleaning up the garage and stuff like that. And they've been out picking up trash. One issue that they have is with that pavement compactor, the little roller they use, it's, apparently has a bad pump, a bad hydraulic pump.
Okay.
Is what Rodney was telling me. And they weren't sure where to get one or how to get it. And I just did a little bit of searching for the pump and they're fairly expensive. So is that roller something? Do we own that now? I thought it would be sold to Luke or something at one point. Do we own that thing? Does it, do they say it's ours? Unless we can find some other options for repairing that pump, it's about $2,100 for hydraulic.
Yeah, nothing hydraulic is cheap.
Yeah, nothing's cheap. And it looked like it's the original one. It probably has never had any one, so.
Yeah.
So we'll have to figure out how we can get that.
We'll have to look around and own that. Fortunately, that's not something we use all the time.
No, and so, so they can, they can do without the.
Right. The other issue that I didn't realize, because we were black talking all downtown at first, is when we take it up on the hill, it's not so bad getting it up, it's getting it back down.
Yeah, they said they can't really use it up on the hill safely, so that's.
No, we'd have to tie it to the bumper of the truck. And make sure they didn't go over the top of it. But yeah, we'll look around for parts for that.
I see note two about that Luke has a sprayer tank for weeds that we could use, but it needs a motor, so I mean, everything's, you know, needs stuff. But if we could get that, that would be a good option for some of the areas in town to spray some of the weeds. And there's a mention of grading at the corner of the library and Ashfield. Is it broken? Is that the problem with that grading?
You know, it's, it's not.
Or something.
It's not broken, but I'll tell you what, that used to be so heavy, great heavy. And people were cutting that curb short and they're running over it and flipping it out.
Oh.
It's flipping it out, so.
Yeah, it needs to be sealed up around the edges so it can't come out.
I did talk, yeah, yeah. Did talk to Rodney about a couple of things.
He said there were some other gratings around town that are broken and need to be looked at. Gratings and water meter covers.
Yeah.
That those become hazardous as they're right on the sidewalk. And if they're cracked, you could step through it, so.
Yeah, and that one down there is, like, it could swallow a person. Literally, I mean, it's like this. So we might end up just having to put some straps over it, both down there.
Look at someone, maybe there's something we can do a little more permanent. But I'll, I'll look at that with the guys.
Yeah, we thought about drilling down through, because there's a, there's a concrete lip about like that, all the way around it. If we drill down through the metal and down into the concrete, I'm not worried with that as people run over it, as it could have bumped those bolts up out, you know, so.
There's probably a way.
There's probably a way.
Maybe we'll talk to the highway department or something, they have idea.
Maybe, super glue. There you go. There you go. But it just started happening like that probably about a month ago.
And I see someone reported that they had some drainage problems. I'm sure the guys know about that. Other than that, I think that's all I got.
Did they tell you about the F-550?
Uh, no.
It has some mechanical issues. We may replace right out of Pyrod, drag link and steering damper. I have two quotes on that. One is 814-08, the other one is around 540. So we'll have to get that going because that's our main truck. Anything else?
That's it, that's all I have.
Okay, thanks. Mary?
Give me a financial report. General fund stands at $9,551, excuse me, $9,551.79. Water account standing at $364.88. Sewer account, $1,226.38. Parks and Rec, $4,030.82. Swimming pool stands at $7,391.79. The 941 accounts the same, fire department grants the same. Security deposits stands at $5,255.42. Coal sevens tax remains the same as it was two weeks ago, the same with the proposed repairs. The excess levy and water improvement project have remained the same. Water CWCR account stands at $5,879.49. The sewer CWCR account stands at $3,717.3. The go pay accounts, the budget $101.56. And the renewal and replacement account stands at $3,489. The other three accounts stand as they moved two weeks ago.
I like that last page, Sharon.
I was gonna say, did I get?
Yeah.
I'll have to look that one up, everybody.
Yeah, the last page. Only count report for the general water, the sewer has the outstanding checks on it. And about exactly that. Okay, hold it, not here. So we wanted agenda, open business, none, new business. Greg, do you want to do all three years at once and we'll, we'll make one motion for them? That would be acceptable to everybody?
It's acceptable to the council, it's acceptable to me.
Perpetual acceptance.
Yeah, for the grant agreement, the recommendations for award and drawdown of IJBC. Is that okay with everybody? Do we do them all at once?
I don't have a problem.
Beth?
My next one.
You can do that. Just summarize it for us.
All right, most of these are just one of a kind, having to do with the well project. First one, the grant agreements. Right now, we're sitting with Frashen with a bill of $27,500 for geotechnical services and engineering during the project. And the $115,065 preliminary design, final design, topographical surveys for $115,000. That is the grant agreements of where we're at with the spending on the well project. The second one, your recommendations for award. We opened the bids, last meeting. We need approval from the council. The six bids quickly are B.C. Allen, $512,275. Halls Contracting, $568.125. First Street Estimating, $680.674. Estimating Associates, $747.917. Green River Group, $751.955. And Carl Belt, $855,455. That was a six bid. Recommendation will be for B.C. Allen, $512.275. Contract number two was for the tank project. Mid-Atlantic storage system was the only bid, $685.299. And I recommend we accept B.C. Allen in Mid-Atlantic. The last one, number seven on your agenda, was the IJBC critical needs drawdown. They had pooled some of the money out of the internal. Some of the bills will go to IJBC. The accountant, $24,500. Preliminary and final designs, $100,000. Bidding negotiations, 15. Engineering surveys and topographic, $10,000. MAP, $5,000. Geotechnical, $12,500. Project administrator, $3579.18. Other administrative legal fees, $282.77. Eastens, $2,000. So the subtotal for that is $172,861.95. For a balance with the critical need, $602,138.05. And I recommend they approve that, those payments accordingly.
I have a motion for approval of the.
Rhonda, let me go back. I think, and I don't know if the technicality is involved, but I think maybe the council needs to make the recommendation based on the information that we have from Greg.
I think the rule is that we have to accept the lowest bidder.
Well, I know that, but I'm saying.
So what, what?
The motion.
Oh, yes.
From the council, I think it has to be done by a council person.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't make the motion.
No, you didn't.
I made the recommendation. You guys have to make the motion on those board.
I understand you made the motion, so.
You're right.
Sorry about that.
That's right.
I'll make the motion based on the information provided by Brad for the three water project.
And I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Greg, it's, it's a formality vote. Hold motion, second motion, there's one more step.
All favor.
Simple, but just a formality.
All right, Sharon, your budget revision.
That's for the carryover that needs to be in by, basically, what was in the general account at July 1st. That's our carryover.
Okay. So it looks like we're carrying over.
$333,333 is the carryover.
So we have a motion to approve the carryover, $333.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second.
All favor? You guys remember this, oh, yes, oh, yes. Let's get back to our nuisance ordinance. So we had, you know, we got it last week and Rick Hillenbrandt read in on it. And also Josh Wiseman, he's a legislative attorney at state. We got some pretty interesting communication back from him. Basically, we have no problems approving this. What it will do is null and void all the other ones that we have, condense it down into one. We do want to look towards getting a enforcement officer. It's going to make it a little less complicated for them instead of putting a new ordinance in because they are all over the place. This will negate them and we'll have one consolidated thing. It does not have anything to do with the IBC at all, the international building code. It's a standalone ordinance.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
That we've already adopted the international building code, so. And I was just looking at the ordinances today in the office to see what we have in place. And we have plenty of ordinances in place dealing with everything that's in there. And the thing that they caution is that, that if you are going to make your own local ordinances, I've read the same thing, this is not available online from WBU School of Law, that, that we should be sure that we aren't conflicting with the state codes.
Exactly.
And, and so nobody's researched that yet. We don't know that we conflict with the code or not because you didn't look at the code before you.
I did look, I skimmed through the IBC and when I realized that it didn't have anything to do with the nuisance ordinance, I stopped.
Did you look at the international?
Yes, the international building code.
Did you look at the IPC, also international IPMC, international property management code?
Is the letter from a attorney who says.
I've seen the same thing. There's also something in this packet, the disadvantages. I'll say these, and then I'm going to vote no on this item, I'll just let you know. I'm going to vote no, and I'm going to encourage my fellow council members to vote no because we already have the DEP to contact for weeds and trash. And we already have extensive ordinances on file in the office that include fines, jail time, whatever you want to do for people that have property properties. So this says the disadvantages is by adopting a local ordinance that controls that and trying to, I don't think we can even nullify an ordinance where we've adopted the state building code. You can't un-adopt the state building code. So which one are you? They do, when we look at the ordinance, it's completely verbatim, the state building code is what we already have on our ordinance book. It matches everything that the fire marshals wants us to have, and all that, we've already done it.
Right, we had the building code, this is different.
But it's not different because that building code and the fire marshal's fire code includes the international building code, the international plumbing code, the international property management code. Which includes all the stuff that we want to talk about with accumulations of trash and noxious odors, any of that, it's already in there. And so the disadvantage, I'll say one last thing, I'm gonna shut up. That, that disadvantage of doing your own ordinance is it's subject to appeal, meaning anybody can take this to the circuit court. And, and so are we prepared? Do we have the funding for legal fees that we're, that's going to cost us to take people to court over this? And it says it requires savvy legal counsel with an understanding of litigation and nuisance law. So we don't have a big legal department. We have Jason Sykes, he's busy. It's not something that I don't think he's going to be wanting to be litigating tickets that we give because we didn't go with the international building code. They say, all this, they say in here, it really means looks as a recommendation to go with the building code. Because there's a quote that says, whether violations enumerated under the international property maintenance code are pursued directly or under these procedures, it says, it's, the international property maintenance code provides a tried and true, well-established code that is accepted statewide under the state fire code. So it's already been tested in the courts, already had lawyers approve it. Or this ordinance that you borrowed, I think from Kaiser. Kaiser isn't known for having, dotting all their i's and crossing their t's. And I don't think we should be copying an old fashioned ordinance that talks about things like body houses. You know, the language of it is very outdated and it's, I think, the whole ordinance is because the international codes that supersede it. And that's.
Mary, you have confirmation on that?
Let me just comment on a couple of things that this Josh Wiseman indicated in an email that we got from him. Said he's a legislative staff lawyer and he's a counsel for the House Government Organization Committee. Quote, "I think Piedmont is well inbound about the city council wish to adopt a nuisance ordinance." Goes on and he mentions the fact that, as I understand the law, a municipality may regulate nuisances via nuisance precincts to, this is the code, 8-12-5, parentheses, 22, whether or not the municipality has adopted the state building codes. The state building code does not address some of the things that are going to be included in this ordinance that's going to be presented.
What, for example? I haven't not found anything in that ordinance that I couldn't find in the property management code. If you only look at the state building code, that's not the property management.
I'll let you finish.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm just making the recommendation, and I'm going to read the ordinance again. And I think every person that's a council member has a vote. You can vote yes or you can vote no. And we'll go from there, and if it ends up nobody wants to do it, that would be fine with me. Continue to hack this around, it's not getting us anywhere. And add to that, there were, for example, Huntington, Morgantown, Martinsburg, Putnam County, South Charleston, Jefferson County, and pretty Harpers Ferry, Mannington, Kaiser, Wheeling, Clarksburg, Moorfield, Nutterford. That's just a few examples that West Virginia code allows those people to do just exactly what we're trying to do right. There are numerous others that weren't mentioned. It's just a few examples. The common types of nuisance ordinances are noise disturbance, health, sanitation, abandoned and junk vehicles, disorderly houses, and accumulation of junk. This ordinance that we have covered all of those items. So I'm just going to read the first section since we've already read it before. And based on idiots, it draws rules and order, we are in line based on the fact that it died for lack of a second hour last meeting. In accordance with the authority granted to the West Virginia municipality to address and remedy nuisances by West Virginia Code Day, dash 12, dash 5, parentheses, 22, and 6, dash 3, dash 6, the city of Piedmont hereby ordains that no person shall erect or try cause, maintain, or permit to exist any public nuisance within the city of Piedmont or within the police jurisdiction of the city. And then there's general, and then there's public nuisance affecting health and safety, public nuisance affecting peace and safety, storing, parking, leaving, abandoned, dismantled or such mode of vehicles. And then it talks about the notice and the penalties, so forth and so on. We had the first reading on 6/4/25. I'm making a motion that we accept the ordinance as presented.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
The voters. Okay, update on Senate Bill 50.
You have a copy, I was in your folder. Basically, Senate Bill 50 requires now that municipalities align their election dates with the statewide primary or general elections. We have until 2032 to change the ordinances and the charter to comply with this new requirement. Every reason for, it reduces costs and it increases voter turnout, which I question. We have to change the charter. We have plenty of time to do that. When we make some revisions in the charter, we'll go and I'll, I'll contact Lauren Alouf and get a recommendation from her on to what would be the best, when we get to that point, what would be the best primary or general election that we go ahead and at the same time have the election of Mayor in town. Since it's every two years, you know, the charter.
We have until what, 2032?
Yeah.
But we don't feel we're upon it all with somebody else.
I don't think we need to do it now because it's only, you know, 2025.
Right.
And we've already had the election. We have people that have been elected for four years and elected for two years. And when we get closer to that level, ducks in a line and there'll be everyone, go ahead and implement that. And when we get closer to that, we'll have our ducks in line and nobody will go ahead and implement that. But it's something we don't have to worry about.
But something we start getting information on and maybe make it as painless as possible.
I think maybe Lauren might be able to help us out, you know, with what would be the best time to do it, whether a primary election close to thirty two or the example of like.
Yep.
We should start a folder for what we want to change in the charter and it'll just be in there. There's a few other things that should change.
That's a good idea, yeah.
Put it all in there together.
Yes, one fast sweep.
In the next year or so.
Yes.
That's not as high a priority as.
Yeah. Okay, Craig, you all was on here about volunteers, not here, so.
I did speak and, um, I think his ideas are good. I'm not sure if he's as organized as we'd like him to be, but he's got some volunteers that he wants to be able to bring up here to just clean up trash and, and I'm not sure exactly what they do. Our city guys are doing a great job of picking up the trash, but there are definitely places probably for it.
Sure.
And I, I want to tell them, um, that, that I think they, they would be welcome to come up here and clean up. They, they don't need anything from us, really. They're not gonna be on private property or anything, they'll just be cleaning up the public areas in town. And these are, these are guys that are, uh, have various, uh, legal problems and need to get some community service hours. And, and I, I told him if he brings us the paperwork for the guys, you know, I'd, I'd be happy to get that signed off if one of us or you need to sign it or whatever.
Yeah, we would need to know ahead of time.
And we'll, we'll know when he's coming. I, I just don't know when he's gonna be able to, to do it. When he does, I think if he just brings the paperwork, I don't think he needs to really schedule it, but that might be hard for him to do.
Yeah, we just need to know when they're.
If they, if he stops by in the office or, or let's, he'll, he'll be able to let us know a, a day or two or, I'm sure at least before. And I'll let you know, I'll make sure we know he's coming up. And then someone, I can walk around with him or something, make sure they're actually cleaning up and then we can sign off that they get their hours. And that would help some of those guys. That, that seemed to be what he was mostly interested in doing on this project, so, um, I'll let him know that we.
Okay, I'll put that away.
Have a question, Lauren.
Mm-hmm. Um, I noticed that a lot of people must not be getting garbage service away because they're not throwing trash on the streets. Their dogs have been in two or four out there. And I've noticed a lot of, and a lot of junk that's piled up in the yards and the porches and.
Yeah.
And it's very unsightly. I don't, um, they have to have a garbage car or a garbage person company on those residential. Now, I know some people throw it over the handle or whatever. And I'm seeing that. And also with the properties that are city property now, there are folks that are using those properties for their use.
We need to get those posted.
We talked to him a few days ago in the city building. I think the only question we have none a hundred percent favor of is we have to be careful about the lot door.
Eight person.
Right.
And yeah, that has to be addressed, you know, and then.
Right, we just have to know.
And there, that's fine.
When they're here, who's here, and what they're doing. But yeah, you're, you're right. Does anybody have it? Chris?
I think the thing with the garbage, the prices keep going up and not working.
It does.
We have waste management and they just learn again. I don't know if that's part of the problem or not.
I don't know, it could be, you're right. Like I have one and a half bags a week max and the price I pay for them is ridiculous.
Same with me, I have about maybe one and a half bags, maybe, yeah.
I mean, a lot of people are complaining about this, but when you think about it, they pick up trash every week. And your bill's for three months. That's twelve, maybe sometimes thirteen weeks. Divide what you're paying by that amount and it's not a lot.
It's not, yeah.
To haul trash out of Piedmont. I know they raise it. Maybe it might stay steady, price of gas goes down a little bit, but we don't have much of a choice. There's only, what, two people, Burkmire and I don't care too much for Burkmire and waste management. Now, if you, and you get a discount with waste management if you pay online instead of paying by, by mail. They'll give you a discount because that's what we do.
I saw another one, a new one that's supposed to be advertised for Western Board, but I don't know if they're a flab night person, wouldn't make a couple of weeks and not show back up, you just have to.
Flab night people come around and remember the guy was here a couple of years ago.
Exactly.
And do everything, two months later, we're down to business total.
Right.
They don't pick up in Piedmont though.
That's almost it.
Oh, okay, the one from Western Board, I can.
Yeah, mine's up on your calculation, Terry. I just, Dad and I just did that. Mine's up to about ten dollars a bag, a little white bag. So it's horribly expensive. But what do you do?
You cannot go buy, you can buy tickets to take it up to the dump past Midland. They used to sell, you could buy tickets per bag, it's like three bucks a bag or something.
You do have Western Virginia tag?
Yeah.
I heard, uh, that if you have Western Virginia tag, you can.
You have to be married or you can buy it.
I think so.
We'll check it out, we'll check it out because I thought you could buy the, um, per bag.
I have a friend living in Maryland, so he takes it.
I found that in Martin, we did, and he had some in Maryland to do it, but that's been a while now.
Because I checked with them a couple of years ago and, um, like plastic recyclers, you can't even take recyclers out. Or you couldn't, Dad, I don't know if that has changed.
Maybe I'll, I'll check on that.
Yeah. Is there anything else anybody'd like to talk about? If not, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Some of them?
Second.
Just like church. Ron, saving?
Just a reminder, they get returned every two weeks and they keep all the information.
Oh, there, there, I have one here.
And that's just recycling.